Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's meeting. Tonight, we're hearing the proposals for the Consolidated Land Use Plan. We have four firms that will be speaking to us tonight. We've asked them to give us 15 plus or minus minutes of an overview of their plan and the differentiating characteristics of what their firm have to offer against any competing firms. And then there'll be about 15 minutes' worth of questions from council. We're not making a decision tonight. I've let each of the firms know that. And that's really about it. So, sir, if you want to introduce yourself to the audience, Tom?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Tom Whitehauer. I'm within Focus. And we do have slides. I'm the only one here. One of our members, the co-project manager, he was serving as an expert witness on something today. And another member is crossing the country from a family trip. But thank you for letting us be here as I represent them. At first, when I got the call, I was like, wow, this is really different, having the council interview us. And I thought, you know, usually there's a committee, or maybe if there's not enough planning staff, they ask peer cities to kind of sit on it. Then it hit me yesterday. I thought, I understand this now. If my daughter wanted me to buy her a car and I gave her money, I'd go shopping with her. I wouldn't just give her the money and go, because you're looking for reliability, just like I would in a car. Kind of a service record, how are they doing both with their car and customer care, and a whole lot of things. And I thought, okay, well, the council's paying for it. Either they already got approval, or they're going to get budget approval for this, so why not be the lead in this? And also, the plan's going to come to you in 12 months or so anyway. So, the better that you know your consultant, the better off you'll be. So, it actually makes a lot more sense than other ways I've seen consultants sort of Let me start with this, and just call me Tom when, if you have questions when we get to that point. My name's a little tough. I'm going to go through quickly. I overdid it a little bit on the slides, and I haven't probably used PowerPoint since before COVID or War Thai. It's a little like when you got back together with your family and you sat around the table and you were passing plates back and forth after not seeing many of them for eight months or more. You were like, well, this feels awkward and a little weird, but we're down to PowerPoint or back to it, I guess, so we'll embrace it, right? I'm going to go through these bullet points here, our corporate profile, team members. We understand the project, certainly some examples, the timeline and the workload. Our firm is about 15 years old. It's the second generation of another one that our founder had founded before that, which was about 12 years old, called Benchmark. Rick Flo is his name, and he's obviously still with the company. We have these divisions of planning, public administration, code enforcement. We write UDOs, subdivision ordinances, and I'm in charge of the conference of plans. So, it's appropriate that I'm here. We have division managers of those five areas. Michael Harvey is over planning. He's the co-chair. We have a bricks and mortar office in downtown Kannapolis. If you haven't been to Kannapolis in a long time, it's really made a comeback after the closing of the huge mills there, which is beautiful now and in a short time period. Our mission statement was written just as the firm was getting established. We're committed to serve the public, to help local governments do their best at local government, and provide client jurisdiction at affordable experience and a sense of confidence in our company's capability through the employment of qualified individuals who share a common goal and motivation. We are all experienced planners. Many of us were planning directors in past positions. We've walked in the shoes of your planning staff. One or two of us have served as city managers. We also fill vacancies often. So, we're not only in the office doing consulting work, but we are sitting across the table from developers and elected officials on a regular basis. So, it's very comfortable that we also are doing the conference of plans. If I took a map, I took a picture of the map today and highlighted, which is one of those old sort of pushpin maps of where your clients are, we have really covered the state. If we had more than five or six clients, it's a big red dot. Otherwise, we've been all over, under those five divisions. I won't read them all, and I already made some reference, but we do all these things listed. Sometimes, we're working on multiple projects in multiple areas. Our team members, again, myself and Michael Harvey, we're all AICP, except we have one doctor, and that's on the bottom right of GIS. She was a professor at ECU. We also have KAMA specialist, Michael Harvey, and he lives over here on the east side of the state. Bob Clark, although he's also a KAMA specialist, we put him in his rec and open space. That's so important here. And Karen Dunn, environmental specialist. And I understand you read everybody's resumes. And these are our faces. I don't want to read off what my definition of a comprehensive plan is today. I was on my way here in the, you know, rain and wind, went across a bridge that was in the swamp preserve, and a nice, brand-new bridge. And I said, you know, thank you for building that for me, to myself, because I could tell it used to probably flood on a regular basis. And that's really what comprehensive plan is, is putting, knowing where there's a problem, committing the resources to fix the problem and building it, just like that bridge. So, if we do our jobs correctly, we've set up people to succeed. We've created the environment for investment and expansion and enjoyment, just like somebody that built that bridge. It's mostly based on the vision. That is one important thing in there, and that's what we're big on. You all, fortunately or unfortunately, know all about KAMA. I'm not the expert, but I have spent six, seven, eight, nine years in Florida, where we had much more rigorous requirements and a lot more regional review than the KAMA. And then the KAMA, it's actually, and I was, like I said, brought up in the Florida Growth Act, even though I'm from eastern North Carolina, I was raised in Jacksonville. In Florida, you really had to combine the environmental planning with land use planning, which is what KAMA is quite a bit about, and also protecting and keeping people out of harm's way. It's been a busy few years. As you know, with 160D, the chapter, the general statute that required more directly, which used to be somewhat indirectly, for local governments to adopt plans if they were going to continue their zoning authority, it had a deadline. And so, different communities that we had been serving over the years, we contacted them, they contacted us, and we started working away at getting a plan for them, or one that was really old that they had updated, so they could keep their zoning. Members of our staff are good at proposing changes to state laws and talking to people about passing acts. So, we actually got another extension. That was somewhat our firm's part, to help those that we had to turn away, so we could help them for the next year. So, I don't know, I didn't count them up, but there's over a dozen that we did there. We're used to working hard and efficient. We do this on a regular basis. And so, those are most last three years or so that we've done. Comprehensive plan experience, we always sit down and we don't just start mapping and downloading. I do the GIS as well, and I write policy and facilitate meetings. But we really spend about four hours with our client communities and whoever they want to have on a kickoff meeting. And we said, really, schedule about half the day, because we're going to start with the issues that you have. We know we'll hear more from the community, but we don't want to get to the end of a project and a significant investment of time and run out of steam and budget to then hear about something in the middle of an adoption meeting or something. So, we work hard to get that upfront, and it usually exposes things that they didn't know how to attempt to solve, but we might not either, but we work at it and we get it done. Sometimes, we also tell them, you don't know some of these resources. You've got some real hidden treasures here. Let us point them out. We'll write some policies to help you grow some areas of your town that are ready, from different points of view, called catalyst areas. And we'll either work them into those plans, or they'll come back to us, like Rutherford. And we were the first ones they called back when they got $2 million to redevelop a major highway through town in western North Carolina. We're going to work with you at the front end also to see what kind of public outreach you want us to do, the more creative or different or even traditional we will do for you. And that's through different social media. A lot of what we end up doing is polling the town, coming up with answers to some questions on surveys, and talking to a lot of businesses. And mostly, the five questions we ask are, what do you like, dislike, wish, fear, and what are your priorities? A lot of times, we can find a common denominator with all of them, and that works well. One of the towns we did a plan for this past year was a town of Minnesota Beach. And they said, you're going to have a hard, you know, assignment. I'm surprised y'all wanted to take it. This is a very divisive community. A lot of people don't want any growth. A lot of people are ready for growth, and you're stuck in the middle. And we were able to kind of put those different answers and questions and discussions we've had with people together in overlap, and we crafted some policies. And they said, this is going to work well. And so, it merged those opposing views to say, maintain small-town character while managing slow-targeted growth. And then we had a series of strategies after that. And when I was in their town, doing this chart and presenting it, I went to one of their community pools, and I started to have one of those experiences like Richard Dreyfus in Close Encounters, where like, I've seen this before, I've seen this. And it was their pool, their community pool, kind of overlapping three circles, like my little chart was there. We also get down to the small details quickly, too. What they were afraid of were budget stores that were coming to town right on their outskirts. And there's a few things you can do if they are going to come, where they end up looking better. And this is just an example. I showed them, I said, if you write and adopt commercial design guidelines, conditional zoning, or another tool called form-based codes, you could control the growth, the way that it looks, and that might appease the fear of development. So, these are two budget stores, exact same chain, much different look. And the bottom, in another place, looks like it would blend in a lot better. Same square footage. They've got landscaping, but you can see even looking down what a difference it makes. And then we went on to suggest you could have commercial development that has kind of a beach theme, coastal look, and they were happy with that. So, we kind of write the big policies and then get down to the implementation. That's a big thing we do. Of the two or three people in our team, there's a long list of KAMA experience that they have had over the years at different capacities. And they still know people on the other side of the table they'll be working with during the project. We have people with transportation planning experience. Everything is in-house, including, like I said, GIS. We don't have sub-consultants we use. We're small, but we have a range of skills. And there's nothing like being able to kind of cross disciplines when you're studying a town, talking to people. And of course, open space, I mentioned, that's a list of experience in that area. The project timeline, you know, for us to have hit all those dates with those over a dozen clients, this is no different. Having us here tonight also shows that you're ready to start and start pretty quickly. So, the 13 to 15 months until it's adopted, there's a point where we'll finish before adoption, and we're just waiting for adoption. It will be no problem at all. So, I mentioned the orientation, where we meet with you, get a tour, a little look of the land. Our background research and analysis is very thorough. We're doing public participation throughout the plan development. That's one of the 160D requirements, is public participation in a future land use map. Right now, everything else is kind of voluntary, but we always, you know, obviously do more, but that's a huge one. And we draft the plan in task four, start working with staff. Nobody's surprised at anything we put in there when it gets to the planning board level and the town council level. We help you with the advertisement, all the logistics that go in the newspaper. And then we're here, of course, for the different meetings. We also meet with, for the KAMA portion while we're doing all this. And then we leave you with, we narrow down an implementation plan. We work hard to restrain ourselves from overloading you. And that's just an example of that. In this case, Rutherford, and we said, it's time for you to really look at some areas, catalyst areas. They looked at them, they applied for grants, they got them. Now, they're hiring us, or hopefully, to come back. We did a big scope for them. A lot of times, our comp plans, CUPs, comprehensive land use plans, either start also simultaneously with writing UDOs for a community, or they hire us shortly afterwards. So, if it's underlined, those are communities that had us do both at some point. Also, similar coding here, we underlined where we did a comp plan, and they hired us for continuing services. So, that work that Michael Harvey's doing is for a past client, to do some expert testimony on something that must have gone to court. The rest of those are continuous services that we have going on right now. We even get it to the point, and love doing implementation. We did the comprehensive plan for King's Mountain. I did some GIS work for them under continuing services, and then they hired us to do some downtown redevelopment. This was a concept plan. They used to look like this, and then in a short amount of time, with DOT grants, they've started to revitalize downtown. Our current workload is in excellent shape. I'm working on two comprehensive plans. Rick Flo I mentioned, he specializes in the UDOs. He's working on three right now, including counties Brunswick, Vance, and a small village called Village of Marvin in Union County. And those first two, I'm finishing soon. So, I'm in perfect shape to start quickly.
Tom, we've got, we're pushing on time. Is there any last?
Last slide, right here. Yep. Why are we different? We're all AICP. We're experienced. We're excited. Like I said, we've walked in your planner's shoes. We have mastered the schedule after so much work of these kind of projects. We're available. And just to shoot down to the bottom, we don't confuse you with a lot of legalese and plannerese. We don't leave you with more than you asked for or need. We're concise, and you're going to understand your plan, you're going to use it, and you're going to draw upon it for years. We're not going to intimidate anybody. We're going to work with you. We're, you know, that's what we do. We work with small towns all the time. We stay away from big cities, and so we'd leave you happy and not confused. So, again, my name's Tom, and if you want questions and answers, you're lucky you got me, because I'm the, I'll give the shortest answer of probably the team members. And I'm not even going to need to fill 10 or 15 minutes, but I'd love to take your questions.
You're now working on the Brunswick County UDO?
It just started. Yep. Yes, sir. That'll be Rick Flo.
Mark, can we start with you?
I have no questions at this time.
Bob?
Yeah, just make it note here. So, Tom, when you think about this process, how is it, how open and inclusive do you imagine this process would be, where you'd have interactions? You're doing the community meetings, you're dealing with staff. Do you directly interact with council at all, or do you kind of leave that interaction with staff?
Well, you have a planning board, too. And so, we meet with staff when we get to the point when we're starting to engage with the planning board and drafts. We ask, can the elected officials please attend the meeting? You know, we'll put a notice that there could be more than a couple, you know, to not create a problem with unadvertised meeting, you might say. But we, the more you know about the project as it's coming along, the better. So, we also send updates as often as you might like, you know, monthly might be enough, and show you progress along the way. And your staff can either share those, if you want, we could post it, you could post it online. What I've realized about comprehensive plans, it's almost like building a car. If you just kind of show the frame and a couple of quarter panels, it's not going to mean much. It really takes a while to understand and form the plan from what all we know, until you can kind of go, oh, I get it now. That's how they're coming at this. And so, we're not going to hold anything back, but we're just going to say, you know, these different parts will make sense when they're all put together and kind of on the showroom floor.
Anything else, Phil?
Good, thank you.
You had commented, maintain small town and attract businesses. That's one of our dilemmas. What's your Cliff Notes version on maintaining the small-town feel while attracting businesses?
One of the reasons we're here and the other firms is success breeds success, and Oak Island is successful. Similarly, companies want to be here, whether they're mom and pop or they're national chains. The national chains are used to, at least for the last 20 years, of coming across towns like this. And when you say, we have on the books that we require this, this, and this, all they do is reach in their briefcase and pull out the plan that meets or exceeds that. Saves some time. Plus, that multimillion-dollar investment they're making is going to be protected, knowing that whatever's across the street or next door is going to be up to those standards. So, the investors aren't worried about it. What investors and developers are is uncertainty. They don't want to get tied up with objections from neighbors of light and noise and this and that. So, it's, what we do in the comp plan is build the basis for that. You're not supposed to have the actual regulations in your plan, but pretty firm vision of what you want and where you want it. And then it's the UDO and the regulations that'll be very specific to require design elements of where you want it. You can even, so the form-based code, I mentioned, I took all the classes in that. It's taught, it was taught out of Chicago when I taught, when I took it. But that concept is, you're more concerned with the look of things than the zoning it's in. So, you could have quite a few uses in development, and, you know, some of what I showed in those images that look like they belong in a coastal community, and they didn't just, you know, look like a foreign object in your beautiful town.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. That's a great question.
Yes, thank you. Can you tell me, from your firm's perspective, how you all interact with the planning board, what you need the planning board to do? Do you all advise communities to form a steering committee, or do you only work with the planning board?
We would, we'll do whatever you like. We have had more success with the planning board. Traditionally, they need to be planners and visionaries. They shouldn't really have only the responsibility of review and rezonings and text amendments and those kind of things that do go before them as an advisory board to you all. But really, they need to, we do a little bit of education in some places where they've lost their way, maybe, and they're more technically minded, and we explain and open their eyes to, no, this can actually be fine. You can make a difference. How rare is it for a citizen to have a change, direct change in the look of a town in sometimes two or, two to five years? Sometimes, it might take 10 or 15, depending on the economy. And they can look at it, and this is, I'm getting chills down my back, where you can just go, you know, I have something to do with that. It looks, turned out great. Where that was totally the right area for it, or, you know, we had, in another way, is we had so much opposition to the first few words of what this group wanted to build, and now people are proud to say they live in the neighborhood that that's in, and they welcome their neighbors over to it, you know. And so, it's, it's, we, short answer is, we would like the planning board, but if you would, what we do do also is talk to stakeholders. You know, you're going to want us to maybe talk to the realtors and builders, and if you have a tourist base, obviously, your visitor's bureau or welcome center, whatever. But however you want to do it, but we've found that the planning board, it has, they have the buy-in. We've completely changed the mind of one town we're working in. The chair, I won't say which one, he was against everything, all development. He didn't even like the idea of a plan or new regulations. He had worked his way up to kind of a fiefdom, where he thought he was king. And we had to kind of inform him that's not the case for any way of authority that they've been given. Turned him around, and then he was the biggest supporter, said, we see where you're going with this, and he's had great success. So, sometimes, we have one or two that we have to win over. And that's just part of our challenge, really. It's expected, to tell you the truth.
Thank you. John?
First of all, thank you for coming in this horrible weather.
Thank you.
Quite unusual for us. And thank you for abridging your presentation. I realize you're doing this on the fly. So, did you get a chance to read your prospectus? The question I would have, I'm familiar with critical path theory. You talk about creating a path here and harmonizing disparate elements, protecting the environment, and maintaining historic growth, et cetera, et cetera. All very interesting. I served on the previous committee. The committee delivered, I think it was 75 recommendations, including 20 that were marked as urgent. Two of them have been implemented fully. And the centerpiece of the previous effort was a walkable downtown center, which did not come into fruition. So, my question is, in what way are you different on the delivery to implementation side of this equation? Because everybody's going to generate all kinds of recommendations. That's all well and good, unless they're acted upon. How will you help us, meaning council and manager, actually deliver on these?
Well, I feel like Rick Flo, the founder, called and asked you to ask that question, so I could tell you about him. Between founding Benchmark, which still exists and flourished, and starting the firm in Focus that I'm here with, he had seven years of non-compete, where he couldn't be a consultant in the area of his consulting firm he sold. So, after realizing he really is not the retirement type, he became a developer. He has an engineering background, and he developed his own community that he lives in. He has always understood and really teaches what he learned, both in college and in real life, location dynamics. Infrastructure was his background as an engineer. So, he understands water, sewer, capacity, transportation. Location dynamics is, why do places decide where to, hopefully, they think about the smart things they need to consider of where to locate. And so, I've been with him on projects where there's a preconception that they want a new town center in this location, and he has to say, we've studied it. Actually, it's in a whole other area of town, and here's why. And he'll go through everything with that. So many things come into play. So, you'll, he will be our resource. He's not listed as a member of the team, but he works about two doors down from me and is going to obviously demand to keep an eye on this project, as I sort of keep an eye on other things in the office, too. So, that's a big part. We have a kind of a hybrid developer planner, and he loves to do it, and he's, as I am a cheerleader of small towns, so I think that will lead to it being in the right location and being sized of what can work. If it's not, what we also do, we did for Marsh, Marshville, that was one of those things where we sat down and said, what are your problems? Infrastructure. So, we have a new component, capital improvements element to their plan that we introduced, that will look at water, sewer, transportation, parking racks, anything to help put it in the right place, where you don't have competing department heads want money and all over the place. You want it, you know, it's time to focus for the next 10 years on this one area. So... So, very important. Placemaking is what you're talking about, investment of core, a dynamic area. And that's, we've got experience in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, building on Mr. Box's question, seemingly, implementation sits somewhere between the vision that you helped the town create and the UDO. So, do you include as part of your overview? Do you go through the UDO? Do you make recommendations to the UDO to realize the recommendations that you have in the plan? How do those intersect?
That's a great question. I did look closely at the scope as I was preparing for tonight. We will look at the UDO, but we, unlike some communities where we've, maybe they already, they had their proposal or something, where we're responding that we will do really a sort of diagnostic on their UDO. That's not in here. We could add that. And it's very, that would be kicking myself or Richard or really Michael in to do that. Patty Rader, I have her listed right there on purpose for this Q and A because she's the person that could hop on the phone and talk to you more about that. We did, I think we have a pretty, I guess, low amount in there. We, we're efficient and we don't waste time. There's not room for fluff. That is not fluff, that's critical. We'll do that. It's just that we do a really thorough one when we agree. How thorough do you want it? Absolutely. We, so anyway, short answer, we'll do it. It's already in that fee, but we can do more if you have been frustrated with it. Sometimes towns hire us just to do that. And they say, wow, with these images of what you're showing us, how out of date or mismatched our regulations is to what is either getting built that we don't like or people can't build what they want to build and they get frustrated and go elsewhere. We would love to build it. Probably images that come in here and you're saying, sorry, we love it more than what was getting built, but we can't approve it because it's not on the books. We work in places that hire us just to do that sometimes, just to say, look at the numbers, the images. And, you know, they either decide to change it or if there's some kickback internally or with the builders or something, they might not for a few years.
Thank you very much. Any burning questions that you might have that you'll regret tomorrow that you didn't ask, counsel?
$54,000 proposal, sir. The studying of the UDO, is that where the $150 an hour comes into play? Or did, when you said that's included, you meant that really is included?
That respectfully, I'm so glad you're asking. But Patty, she is, she's on it. She'll be able to answer that. I don't want to misspeak. The planners, we intentionally focus on the work and not the budget, you might say. But we always check with her. Just to tell you what she used to do, she used to be the comptroller for diamond mines in Africa. So, if she can be in charge of something like that, she can keep planners in check. And that's what I'm responding to, is not to step on her toes.
I appreciate you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that winds it up. Mr. Whitner, thank you very much for coming. Safe journey home.
Thank you all.
And we'll make a decision and be in touch.
Okay, I love your community, keep doing the right thing.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Liz, who's next?
No, thank you for the reminder, John. Appreciate it. Did that go okay for y'all?
Mm-hmm, very good.
Clarion's next.
Clarion's next.
Do we have the printouts in our mailbox?
Showed up tonight.
No one asked me.
And Terry and John were all fancy and had stuff. So, I thought, shoot, what'd I overlook? And Lisa said, I can give you my copy. I sent it to you electronically. So, I don't know how they got theirs. Lisa gave me mine.
I printed select pages. I didn't print the whole thing. I just looked for the.
Make a request. If you build it, they'll come.
You got it?
Yeah.
That's what Kevin Costner told me. Thank you, Lisa. I promised her I wouldn't write in her book.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
We're glad you came.
Greetings.
Going to introduce yourselves to the council?
Yes. So, I am Leigh Ann King. Can you hear me okay? Am I speaking into the microphone enough? Okay. Leigh Ann King, I'm a director with Clarion Associates. We're a planning and zoning firm that's based out of Chapel Hill, North Carolina. We're headquartered, actually, in Denver, Colorado. So, we work across the United States doing planning and zoning projects for local governments like Oak Island.
Speak up, just a tad.
Sure, sure. Sorry, I got, I had a, I caught my son's cold over spring break a couple of weeks ago, so my voice is not as sharp as it should be. So, does that, does that sound a little bit better than? Okay, I'll repeat myself now. So, Leigh Ann King, I am a director with Clarion Associates. We're a planning and zoning firm based out of Chapel Hill, North Carolina. And our headquarters is actually in Denver, Colorado. So, we're a national planning and zoning firm. We work entirely for local governments, cities, counties, towns, villages, islands across the United States. Here with my colleague, Emily Covino, I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Emily Covino, and I'm associate with Clarion Associates as well, based out of the Chapel Hill office also.
I think we've got our PowerPoint up now, so I will move forward here. So, Emily and I are representing Clarion Associates this evening. We have several other members on the team. My role, if we were selected on this project, would be to be the project manager. I've been working with Clarion Associates since 2005. I had worked my way up from associate to senior associate to principal, and now I'm a director and one of the four partners in the firm. I've led or been kind of the lead planner on approximately 20 to 25 comprehensive plans, most of which are in the Carolinas, some in Virginia, Florida, and other parts of the country as well. And so, again, joining us is Emily. She's going to be the project planner, working on the project. We've worked on several plans together. And we also have two other team members, Michael Everhart, who is our mapping and data analyst, and Addie Sherman, our website graphics coordinator. An important teaming partner for this project is Wes McLeod with the Cape Fear Council of Governments, who's got a lot of experience working with the town as well as other communities within kind of the CAMA planning area. And their focus is really going to be on environmental hazards, parks, transportation components of the plan. We would be more involved, as you'll see in later slides, in kind of the land use focused, community character, thinking about kind of cultural resources, infrastructure, growth management type components of the plan. They'll also be assisting with the CAMA approval process as well because they've got lots of experience doing that. And then you'll see the Convayio Document Engagement logo up there. That is a tool that we frequently use with communities that's been very effective in providing online engagement opportunities that can be leveraged in a whole host of different ways. So, just a little bit about Clarion Associates. We've been in business over, a little over 32 years. We're going to be 33 this year. And again, you know, we work solely for local governments. So, we have a strong base working with local governments to create planning and zoning solutions. We have planners, attorneys, landscape architects on staff. We do a lot of work that's really implementation focused. So, we plan with the end in mind. We're really focused on how the regulations in particular or design guidelines or whatever the tools are going to be in place, how those are actually going to get implemented because we do a lot of that work ourselves. We do that work in-house, so we can kind of plan with that kind of end goal in mind. We are a smallish firm. We have about 20 staff between the two offices. It's by design. We're not a growth firm. The principals that work in the firm like to work on projects. So, we don't just manage the business. We're actually intimately involved with the projects. And you would see me at all of the, you know, briefings to council and to the planning board, the public engagement meetings, meetings with the steering committee. I would be intimately involved with those meetings as well as helping to manage the project with the town staff. We have worked in over 600 communities across the US and some international communities as well, over 125 adopted plans and over 230 adopted development codes. I think our team strengths are really that we bring national, state, regional, and local experience across Clarion and working with the council of governments. We really have a broad base to draw upon in terms of kind of the tools and experiences and working with other coastal communities that have, and other kind of high-quality communities that are grappling with some of the issues that you're grappling with. We can bring that knowledge to you. We're a Carolina-based team, so we're not that far down the road. It's pretty easy for us to get here. We're specialists in the core service areas that you need. I mean, we do comprehensive land use plans all day long. I've been doing it now for over 20 years. Very focused on kind of what the North Carolina law is. We know that context. We work within it, both on plans and codes. And again, Wes and the council of governments is very focused on kind of CAMA planning and making sure that we would be meeting all of those requirements as part of this process. Again, strong planned development and implementation experience. We work in urban, suburban, and rural communities. So, we work across the gamut and have a lot of experience working with the various issues. And some of the communities we work with have all of those contexts within them, which I think is, you know, an important thing to have. We also pride ourselves on having great kind of facilitation with the public, having meaningful, representative, and satisfying engagement experiences. That's something that's really kind of an important effort for us. We like to get to the adoption process and call it a non-event because everybody's had a full opportunity and feels satisfied with being heard and having their voices heard and listened to within the process. We're very transparent about all of our engagement. We record every word that was shared as part of engagement activities. And that really helps us get, build trust and transparency throughout the process. So, that helps us to build consensus across varied perspectives because people need to be listened to. I think that's the first and most important thing when we're doing community engagement. And when you get across, when you are able to do that, you can really achieve some great things and get people to listen to each other and various perspectives that they have. So, we are, again, dedicated to public sector work. Firm principals lead the work in our office, and we have been awarded for our efforts. Couple of examples that are shown up on the slide here that I'll point out to you. You're a small community. We, just a few years ago, worked for the town of Davidson in North Carolina to create an award-winning comprehensive plan for them. I think there are a lot, obviously, they're not a coastal community, but I think there are a lot of similarities in terms of the quality of community and some of the issues that you're dealing with. So, we work from kind of small communities all the way up to Charlotte, which we were a subconsultant that developed the policy and some of the implementation pieces for the Charlotte Future 2040 Plan. So, again, we work in a broad range of different contexts and can draw upon all of those to assist. We also have coastal planning experience. Obviously, Cape Fear Council of Governments has extensive experience, including working with Oak Island, most recently on your Unified Development Ordinance audit and doing some interim planning and zoning kind of staffing work. And you can see the list there of the various communities. They have prepared CAMA and comprehensive land use plans for and developed unified development ordinances for. Clarion has interesting experience. We worked in Curritac and Emerald Isle in past years. We've also worked in the Florida Keys, Lee County, if you're familiar with Fort Myers. We did their comprehensive plan evaluation a few years back and Norfolk, Virginia recently. We also have colleagues today that are in Charleston, South Carolina, that are working on unified development ordinance there. So, we have a lot of, again, plan and zoning experience working in coastal communities and the unique issues that you face. How we would work together, Clarion and the Cape Fear Council of Governments, we regularly, by the nature of the size of our firm, we regularly lead teams of subconsultants to leverage expertise for clients. We want to make sure that the services that we're providing are really tailored to the needs that you have. And we have a strong history of successfully managing teams. And that's through close coordination and regular communication with our team members. We have very great working relationship with Wes. And we want to make sure that, again, we're focusing our efforts and our subconsultants' efforts in the areas that really can provide the best value for the local government that we're working for. And so, I think we've identified the topics that the COG would be focused on in this effort that would really kind of leverage that value for Oak Island. Just a little bit more specifically about what we would be doing versus them. So, we would be responsible for the overall project management. That's what we do all day long, is managing community planning efforts and as well as meeting facilitation, leading the public engagement. And then we would split the technical analyses and policy and implementation components of the plan in coordination because obviously, these things are interlinked. And we would be able to do that seamlessly. So, we're going to be focusing, again, a little bit more on land use, community character, economic development, infrastructure, and creating the policies and implementation strategies for that. Whereas the COG would provide some meeting facilitation assistance. They're right down the road, so it's a little easier for them to get here. So, we want to kind of make the best use of your resources on the project. And then they would be focusing on the natural resource resiliency, hazards, parks, and recreation and transportation elements of the plan as well as facilitating CAMA review and approval. Let's see if I can get it to go to the next slide. There we go. So, we think, and I'm sure you probably all agree, you have a lot of strengths to build upon in this planning effort. Obviously, your coastal and natural resources are abundant and are a big reason why members of your community love being here and visitors love to come and tour. Your water resources, the tourism attractions and destinations. But you also have a very unique small-town feel. You're kind of different from, I think, some, a lot of other coastal communities and have a very unique kind of character of development and quality of life here that's important to be factoring in and thinking about how to protect and care for through this effort. You also have great parks and recreation opportunities here, I think more so than most coastal communities that we see. And we think that, you know, your planning efforts have been really largely, you know, to kind of, I commend you all for the work that you all and past councils have done to actually put the plans and regulations in place and funding in place to create the community that you have today. That being said, you know, no community is perfect, and there's always more work to be done. We took a look at your 2023 survey, at those top priorities that your residents said, these are folk, you know, these are the issues that we need to be working on. And I think that number one, growth and development, is a really critical one, obviously, that would be grappled with as part of the comprehensive planning process, followed by infrastructure and roads. But I think most all of these issues here have a role to play within the comprehensive plan and thinking about solutions that we want to be identifying, you know, the issues and what, how we're going to resolve those through the long-range comprehensive plan. This is actually a map that's taken from your current land use plan. And I think it's, you know, as we look at your community, I'm sure you all are thinking about it, too, that the infill and the blue areas on the actual island are important areas to be considering in the impacts of that infill development. But possibly more so, the Williamson tract and Pine Forest tracts and the development that's going to be going on there and thinking about what those implications are with respect to infrastructure, transportation, parks and recreation offerings, fiscal health of Oak Island. Those are very important, critical things that need to be thought through as those areas develop over time. So, our project goals, we know that you have done a lot of good planning work, and we want to build on those planning foundations. That's one thing that we do in all of our projects is we identify what's still relevant and meaningful. We don't want to, you know, recreate the wheel here. We want to leverage what good work has already been done and then really focus on the strategic issues that are new and different, that need to be grappled with here. Provide responsive and high-quality project management. So, thinking about, you know, there are always going to be issues that come up, and we've dealt with a lot of those. We worked in kind of highly engaged communities that, you know, where people don't see eye to eye, and we've dealt with those issues. And again, I can't think of a single plan that has not been adopted that we have led in the last 20 years. We also want to create satisfying, representative, and record-breaking public engagement. We want to make sure that people are engaged and really think that their voices were heard in this project and that they have had a role to play. And that. And that last one is really important, identifying the critical planning issues early and creating policy solutions. Part of that is early stakeholder interviews that we want to be conducting to really help us understand what are the main topics that we really need to be focusing on. There are many, many things that you can focus on in one of these efforts. We really want to be strategic in thinking about the ones that are most important for Oak Island. Our planning approach is a five-phase approach. This is just the overview, and I'll walk through a little bit more of the scope. So if first, we want to engage the community and stakeholders, leadership like yourself, as well as department heads within the community and planning board, and identify the community issues, opportunities, and aspirations. We want to know what those are. Simultaneously, we'll be looking at evaluating existing conditions and future planning influences, so we can see what the data is telling us about your conditions today, how they've changed since your 2017 plan, and future projections and issues that we need to be grappling with that are going to affect you from a long-range planning perspective. Then we start to tie those together, as well as looking at economic insights and infrastructure conditions and plans, to start thinking about what's the preferred plan for this community. Again, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so we want to start with your current policies and your current plan, and then focus on the strategic change that needs to take place using that as a basis. And then we want to integrate and modernize the future land use map and categories and define the specific implementation strategies that would be included within the comprehensive plan. We are very implementation-focused, and we also like to encourage the communities that we work with to find other ways to leverage the plan, so that it's not just the map and categories, but also the policy structure as well can be leveraged as part of development review. So these are the five phases. It's approximately an 18-month project that includes that KAMA certification. So we would launch the project in the first month, get the logo and project website, do our kickoff meetings and stakeholder interviews. Phases two and three are somewhat concurrent, so that second phase is really focused on public engagement and understanding what are the critical issues and what are the policy foundations for the community, with three being a focus on the technical analysis, looking at those planning influences. You see those two gray boxes there, CEW-1 and CEW-2. Those stand for Community Engagement Windows, one and two, and we recommend doing a window approach where we have a key meeting or meetings at the start of the engagement window, and then we have online activities that are available for a month or two following that. So we make a big bust, have some good media attention, get the word out on social media, and then we have that out and can push out communications and publicity on those for the coming months. And that's been very successful even prior to the pandemic, to use that approach and really drive the numbers up and get people to engage. Once we have that community engagement window, number one, completed, and we understand what the new issues and opportunities are, and we've done the technical analysis, then we would jump into phase four, which is actually working to roll up our sleeves, work with the steering committee and staff to develop the new plan. That community engagement window, number two, is focused on a plan unveil. So before we go to public adoption, we want to give the community a full look at the draft plan and have them have an opportunity to provide feedback, adjustments they want to make. We can then bring that back to you and let you know what we heard and talk about how we want to evolve the plan before it goes into the formal adoption process. And again, that's our goal, is a non-event when we actually go to public hearings, so that we've fully vetted all of the pieces that we need to vet. And again, this is just an overview of that schedule of the 18 months across the five Public engagement, talked a little bit about that. I think we want to build on your local culture of engagement, so you have some good opportunities here with various festivals and activities that can be leveraged to get the word out to people and make people aware of this planning effort. We want to make it accessible and fun. People like engaging, for example, when their children are a part of it, and so we like to create and find different ways for people to be interested. But we also want to make sure that we're asking relevant questions and that we're using the inputs that people provide in a meaningful way, that they're actually being used to help shape the policies within the plan. We document everything that we get, verbatim, and we demonstrate how those inputs are being used. So we share, here's what we heard, and here's how it shaped the plan. Whoops, I think I pressed the wrong button there.
So we're running close to time. Is there anything you want to point out to us that you want to make sure that we hear?
We have a variety of public engagement approaches that I list there, and that's the end.
Good job. Good job. John, we start with you.
Yes, first of all, thank you for coming, and thank you for bridging your presentation on the fly. We did have the benefit of having the prospectus. I think I'm one of the few members in the room who've actually been part of a land use plan, the 2017 plan, to be specific. And I'm intrigued by your prospectus, where you talk about the need, I think you call it, metrics or critical scoring tools to evaluate progress on achieving the plan. Because our plan, although eloquent on paper, picturesque even, had 75 recommendations in prioritized order. I would say probably less than 20% of them have ever been implemented by council. So I see a disjunction between the plan created and the implementation phase. That's something you've emphasized, so tell me how you would follow on to ensure that the plan is in front of council, the decision-making body, and is actually going to be enacted.
Great. I appreciate you bringing that up. This is one of the areas that I really enjoy, kind of thinking with the community about how to make the plan designed better to support implementation, and also teeing up some of the connections to other processes that you have, such as budget development, capital improvement planning, departmental work plans. I'm going to give you an example from Cary, North Carolina, where we worked with them. And we have developed metrics for several communities. Most recently, Buncombe County, which is where Asheville is, they recently adopted their comprehensive plan. There are two ways that you can focus on implementation. One is, like you were alluding to, making sure that you're actually doing the actions, achieving the actions that you set out for yourself. You're doing the UDO updates. You're putting a new program in place to support pedestrian accessibility, that sort of thing. But then there's also evaluating how you're moving the needle in terms of trying to achieve the goals that you might be setting out to achieve. So for example, if you want to see a reduction in overall bike ped crashes, that's a way that you can evaluate over time. Are the programs that we're putting in place and the planning tools that we're using actually making the changes from a goal perspective that we want to achieve? So it's not just doing the things you set out to do, but making sure that those things are actually achieving the outcomes that you're setting out to achieve. Sorry, did you have a question?
Thank you.
Yeah. The one thing I was going to say with the Cary example is they actually went further to implement their comprehensive plan, and they identified through their budget and particularly their capital improvement planning process, if a project was included within the comprehensive plan, it scored higher. So when they were evaluating what to be supporting, the comprehensive plan was a very, it was seen as an inventory of different types of capital investments that they wanted to be making, and that was really critical. So they tied directly to that decision-making about how they want to spend dollars, and they've continued to use that as a guide for their investments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I noticed that you all reference in your proposal a steering committee, which is something that we're familiar. It's a model we're familiar with. We explained to me how, as you all go through this update, what you view the responsibilities of the steering committee versus the responsibilities of the planning board, and how do you engage those?
That's a very good question. And some communities choose to have the planning board, or at least members of the planning board, on that steering committee, which I think can be helpful. And you may have done, I think, in your prior plan. I think having that liaison can be very helpful. I'll give another example from Buncombe County. We actually had the chair of the planning board serve on our steering committee. That was quite a large steering committee. It was about 25 people. That can be somewhat challenging to have that many folks, but we've done it. We've had committees up to 35 before that we've worked with, so it's possible to do. It's just more folks to be working with. I think in terms of the role of the steering committee and the planning board, I think it's very important to, at the outset of the project, and we did this recently for Orange County, have a document that helps clarify and articulate what the roles of the different entities are that are involved. And so in the example of Orange County, we have the public's role. We have the role of stakeholders that we interview in the process that are really information sharers and providers, idea generators. Then we actually had a staff working group there that started out as a steering committee and then turned into a staff working group, but their role is really providing inputs throughout the process. We test things with them. We take their ideas. They respond to draft work products. They help really be a sounding board throughout the process. And then the planning board is really, they are the ultimate endorser of the plan at the end of the day, and so we have to make sure that they're comfortable with what's being brought forward. We oftentimes will use steering committee members in presentations to planning boards and councils, so that they can contribute and show why they are guiding in one direction or another. But I think, and then obviously, council is ultimately the adopter and implementer of the plan. You all have to be the most comfortable with this because you own this for a long time. So I think having those roles and responsibilities laid out very clearly are very important. And we have to sometimes pull that document out and remind folks, it's very important that you're involved in this process, but you ultimately are not the adopter of the plan at the end of the day. And so we need to be taking in the feedback we get from briefings, from planning board, and council, and considering that as we make adjustments through the process.
Thank you.
First, thank you for your due diligence and research, knowing so much about Oak Island and about some of our amenities that we already have. Something that I want to wrap my hands around, steering committees and focus groups and all of that, and I was trying to read real quick to see if I could find it. I want the town council, the town administration, and the planning board to be hands-on. I don't want something to come to us every three months. Our 45 people have met 18 times, and here's what they've kicked around, and finally, we brought something to you all. Tell me that's not the situation.
So we can do it however you want us to do it. I'm going to use Orange County as an example. When we started out, I mentioned the staff working group was going to be the lead sounding board, and the Board of County Commissioners basically came in and said, you know what, exactly as you were saying, we want to be more involved in that. We want to, in some respect, be the steering committee for the project. And so at that point, we were under contract, so we made an adjustment, and we added some more meetings, and we're meeting with them more regularly, and they're helping to guide more frequently throughout the process. And we can easily do that. If you were to select us, which we hope you will, we can change the scope so that it is going to make sure that you're not just receiving briefings, but you're actually intimately involved in the process. We did that in Cary as well. Cary had a large steering committee, and they valued the work of that steering committee, but they were making some big, bold moves in their plan, and they wanted to take the time to walk through those big, bold moves before they were going to sign off on the plan. And so we shifted gears and had them more intimately involved.
Thank you.
So super impressed with your focus on public engagement, and more super impressed with your focus on implementation and execution. So thank you for that. So just one question, and it's about the proposal, the FEED proposal itself. So the work that Wes McLeod is going to be doing, that represents about one-half of the total project cost. Will we see council of governments leveraged by other firms that we're going to be talking to in the RFP? Does that make you unique?
That makes us unique, is my understanding. Wes, I believe, said that they were going to be exclusive to us, that they wouldn't necessarily be working directly on the project team. That being said, I think that the council of government serves the local government. So as they need to support, if you were to select another team member, I think that they would definitely support them as it made sense. They just wouldn't be necessarily actively part of that team. Does that clarify?
So the work that he's going to be doing for you, the other firms will take that work and do it in-house.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had two questions, but I think one has been answered. I had a little concern about your project scope or your timeline, where it looked like immediately upfront, you're collecting data, meeting with stakeholders, and then later on, there was a briefing with our planning board, and I think you've heard from enough people that we feel like planning board's involvement should happen earlier. They should be considered part of that stakeholder group, in my opinion at least, and maybe some of my colleagues. So that would be something, if we were to contract with you, I think we would need to sit down and clearly understand your definition of a stakeholder, your definition of when planning boards should engage. We'd like to see it sooner rather than later. So I think we can work through that. My second question, you mentioned earlier in your presentation, a thorough knowledge of North Carolina law, including coastal area development and KAMA, obviously relying on the Cape Fear COG for that. But I also noticed in your timeline, it wasn't until the very end, it seemed like that you were taking into consideration KAMA implications or coastal area development. Why wouldn't you have North Carolina law in the background through the whole process? Because you don't want this thing to come off the rails, and you get to the end, and you're like, oh, wow, this was a great idea. We can't implement it because North Carolina law doesn't allow it. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. And I think because we are staff of planner and planner attorneys in office, that's how we do all of our planning, and I apologize if that wasn't explicitly stated in the proposal. I mean, that's very much how we work on our community plans. We were just actually talking with a community that's considering doing some downzoning, and so one of the things they said, and this is very early stages, we're doing some scenario planning for them, and they said, we need to make sure that this is actually going to be acceptable under North Carolina law. We did the due diligence in-house. We're also connecting with the school of government, which we have regular connections to, to make sure that there's, we're not seeing any problem with this. Do you see any problem with this? They are the experts on land use law in North Carolina. We work with Adam Levle on a regular basis. So I think that's something that we're always thinking about, and again, that eye on, focus on implementation as you're developing the plan. The KAMA piece at the end is really just the formal piece of actually taking it through the approval process, but that would be something that we would be making sure that all of the boxes are checked in terms of the requirements throughout the process, and again, thinking about the context of land use planning in North Carolina. We're limited here, as local governments. We don't have all of the tools that other states and communities have, and so that's something that we're constantly trying to figure out how to work within, and also getting creative about how to solve problems that don't step on legal toes, so to speak.
I was happy to hear you use the word "downzoning." You must be reading my mind. We're on the same wavelength as exactly where I was going with that question, is to make sure we mitigate risk of litigation during this process.
Right. And just for sharing with you, one of my colleagues that's done a fair amount of actual litigation and dealing with that kind of thing, and not just North Carolina, but other places, is that there is some actual case law from other states that could potentially come into effect that deal with more the economic value and creating a taking trigger. So anyway, there's, the devil's in the details on it. There's a lot that could be said about that, but it is something that we try to think through. What are the implications of the policy direction that we're talking about here, and how could that actually play out? And does that put the local government at potential legal risk?
So implementation is the nexus between the plan itself and the UDO, and you've talked about the UDO several times. Can you be more explicit about your involvement and recommendations to the UDO to complement the vision that you create?
So one thing that we always try to do, over the course of the project, we're collecting a whole lot of different ideas about identifying issues that need to be addressed, and are there regulatory solutions that we need to be folding into the planning effort? And as we're folding into the planning effort? And, you know, as we're drafting and working through the iterations, you know, that's something that we're kind of folding into the fabric of the plan. What we typically always try to do, and this is again, just to kind of make it easier for implementation, is to have one solid action within the implementation section that is focused on regulatory changes. And it lists out specifically all of the things that the plan is recommending to be changed. So that when you do come to a point where you're making, whether it's your staff or you hire a consultant, all of that is collected in one place. Buncombe County, I'm just going to kind of use them as an example, you know, they have, they have a, a kind of part of their plan right now that provides some flexibility for different developments that include affordable housing or sustainable development, those types of things. And there were some other pieces that we wanted to fold into that kind of menu of options that they provided to different project applicants. So, that's just one example. Strengthening their floodplain standards was another example. So, we try to kind of put that all together so that it's consistent. We're not being inconsistent about the direction that's being provided. It's also not peppered throughout the plan. You can find it located in one place and be very clear about what the overall changes are that are being recommended.
Thank you very much. Any last burning questions, council?
One thing. Emily drove all the way up here in the rain. Is there anything you want to say?
She did, didn't she? And she did literally do the driving, so thank you.
Say it real quick, because everyone's going to get mad at me.
I did drive here, but it was wonderful. We had time to, to tour, so it was great to see it even in the rain. But I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
You've got a beautiful community.
We're proud of it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels home.
Thank you.
That's 15 minutes of Q and A. So, they went a little bit long on the presentation, but just to give you an idea.
Everything good?
I think just talking with the people that are in the project.
Blaring it over the speakers.
I'm kicking off with you this time.
Okay.
Who's next, Liz?
Say again.
Getting the table uses put in place. Should we wait until after these, these kind of people do their magic 12 months from now?
Yeah.
Still broadcasting, just so you know.
There's two, I'm not sure. There's two Wilmington teams, and I'm not sure which one Brady's going to be in.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Oh, Brady can bring him in.
Who's going to bring in? Sorry, John.
Withers and Ravenel.
We'll be surprised.
Oh, goodie.
For the time.
That's all Lisa. I'm just the messenger.
No, it's helpful. Here, I'll give you these bags. Excellent messenger.
Four of them. Well, let's look at pictures. Five of them. Let's look at pictures real quick before they say.
I think Lisa was concerned with the equity that they kept the same.
This is.
Right on the edge there.
Corner of the picture.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
This is Withers.
Hi, good evening. You want to introduce yourself and your team?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Cindy Swartzkoff, and I am the precursory lead for the design and planning team with Withers-Ravenel. With me today, I have Bob Chandler, who is one of our client officers with Withers-Ravenel. I have Jay McLeod, who is our director of community planning and also is the proposed project manager. And we have Leonard McBride with us, who is an Oak Island resident and who is also our director of utilities for our Wilmington office. So, we're really excited to be with you tonight and really appreciate this opportunity to present to you. Just want to tell you quickly about Withers-Ravenel. We have been in North Carolina for about 40 years now. We are an employee-owned firm with offices across the state, including our office locally in Wilmington. The group that I lead is our design and planning team, and it's a group of about 30 planners, landscape architects, and engineers purposely put together that we primarily focus in the community and civic space. And we primarily focus with small to mid-sized communities across the state. We're really excited to be here to discuss your project. It's personal for us as we have W R teammates like Leonard that live in Oak Island. And I've personally been coming to Oak Island for the last 10 years, staying with friends that live on 15th Street down by the ICW, looking really forward to seeing them this evening after the presentation and going out to dinner and going for a walk in the morning and just enjoying Oak Island. For this, for us, this is a really personal project. We really want to establish a relationship with staff, council, the planning board, and the community from day one. We want to learn from you, what's important to you about this effort and what your desires are and what the selected team should focus on to make this project a success. Already introduced ourselves in this, but I want to tell you a little bit more about Jay. Jay's background is really unique. Not only does he have a master's of urban and regional planning degree, but he also has a master's degree in biology. So, he comes at planning in a holistic manner. He truly understands the science behind resiliency and coastal issues, and he has a deep passion for it. So, for me, it, when I first met Jay, when he first came to North Carolina about 11 years ago, he was working for a local municipality. And I said, this is the guy I need to hire. So, I was able to steal him away from the municipality and he and I worked together at another consulting firm. And when I made the choice to move to Withers-Ravenel, he was my first phone call because I wanted him to be our director of community planning because I so value his knowledge and his expertise in this area. And as I mentioned, Bob, Bob's our client officer. He is based at the coast, and he's ready to address any issues or questions that you may have and also serves as resource to us and to our communities related to funding issues. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay to tell you a little bit more about his group and then our view for the project.
I love being introduced by Cindy. Nice to meet you all tonight. Really happy to be here and thanks for the time. So, Cindy and I have been at Withers-Ravenel a little bit over a year, but like she said, we've worked previously at another firm doing very similar work. And it's always a pleasure. You can see on this map, the places that we have worked and the services that we've provided to local governments and communities across the state. There's a number of services, but I think the important thing to note is that we have kind of a smaller group of community, dedicated community planners, almost all of which have previously worked in local governments. We understand that that side of the fence, the public side of the fence. And it's our pleasure to support local governments in these efforts, the comp plan updates, the ordinance updates, the, you know, CAMA land use planning, that's really where I like to focus and where I have focused in, over the last several years. So, we, we work primarily with small to mid-sized local governments around the state. And that's really kind of our sweet spot, and that's where we like to be. I won't belabor the project team. You had the proposal, and I'm sure you looked over their resumes. But I will kind of highlight the planning folks real quick. Karen is an excellent communicator and very skilled in ordinance crafting. Greg has previous experience working as a Pender County planner for several years. Daniel Rao has a background that's included transportation, Parks and Recreation System master planning, as well as comprehensive plans and ordinance updates. And he is a spectacular listener and presenter. And then John Blasco and Rifat Sharman are part of our landscape architecture group. And of course, Cindy has a lot of experience in the local government realm as well and in private sector planning, supporting local governments as well. And then on the right-hand side, and Cindy will touch on this a little bit more later, you'll see kind of the depth of folks that we can also call on, walk down the hall, in-house folks that we know and work with on a daily basis and, and have effective and efficient working relationships with in multiple different subject areas. So, I wanted to touch a little bit more on the experience that I have working in coastal communities. Those ones with the stars are places where I've project managed CAMA land use plan updates. I love working in coastal communities. If my wife would move, I'd get closer to the water, but she won't. So, I think this is what I do instead, partially. But it's been great working in these communities. They're all so incredibly unique, but a few of the ones in particular share a little bit more similarities, I think, with what we might find here in Oak Island. And those would be the ones that are obviously the beachfront communities. Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Carolina Beach, right around the corner, although I doubt y'all have much reason to go there, I would imagine, on a, on a regular basis. And then some other ones that have similar issues related to character and growth pressures, places like Swansboro, Beaufort, and even Little Washington seems to be having its, it seems to be getting discovered these days. And then, of course, Manio and Pasquetank County as well. So, I would, right after this, I'm going to go through kind of a little bit more about those communities and I think some of the issues that you might have and ways that we've tackled those issues in those communities. But this is kind of the way we approach our planning process. It's probably very similar to how a lot of place, a lot of firms approach the planning process. There's a lot of listening and learning and data analysis upfront, speaking with stakeholders like local, like, well, like leadership, like yourself, like the planning board, getting to know the issues right upfront, speaking with staff and department heads, building a community vision by meeting and speaking and listening to people, members of the public, residents, business owners, and different groups, special area concern groups, whether it's other boards and committees. And then kind of working slowly and iteratively through public engagement with those people in order to find that shared vision, to find a collective vision, and something that can be moved forward that, that most or all people support. And sometimes that's not always easy. Planning is about change and it, and it's tough. But ultimately, we want this to be a plan that's not written by a consultant for their own purposes. It needs to be about the people of Oak Island and what they care about. And so, that kind of starts at day one. And for us, this is day one. And if we have time later on, I would love to hear from each one of you about what you want this plan to accomplish, what would make it successful to you. And I hope we can loop back around to that kind of at the end, because I think that's extremely important as if y'all were elected, right, for a reason. And so, hearing what you have to say about where you think this plan needs to go and what it needs to do is, is I think a great place to start. So, in terms of, I, to my understanding that, you know, there's a very unique character here. There's a very, a family-oriented atmosphere. You have some character issues maybe in the built environment that were specified in the RFP, for instance, the, the main commercial corridor there, and making sure that it's beautiful and inviting as, as well as the gateways into town. Some places I've worked, they say, they'd say, you know, don't talk about building height. Like, we settled that. Don't bring it up. Don't talk about it. Okay, no problem. We're not going to talk about that. Some places wanted to have those conversations. And so, in Duck, it involved kind of looking at the architectural vernacular in the, the built environment and documenting that, and then talking about the things that we love about certain structures and districts and then what we want to keep. And then how can we move that forward in the land use plan? So, in Duck, it was much, very much about polishing what they already had. Because also, it's about 99% built out as well. So, that, and it's all septic limited. In Carolina Beach, it involved building standards for that kind of commercial corridor that goes right down through the middle of town and leads you into downtown. And so, crafting standards for that involved a lot of work with the public and business owners and the stakeholders, which was planning board, council, and so forth. But really, it's about kind of understanding what is the Oak Island experience to the people that live here and visit here, and how do we protect that and nurture it and move it forward. Living at the coast involves living with water. In Carolina Beach, they had a neighborhood, a road, Canal Drive, that regularly floods. It was, they dredged the basin, the yacht basin, and built up some homes there. And then they had a lot of problems with stormwater. And they've had to struggle with that. And we kind of were trying to find ways to move that forward. And they had a committee that was formed and they pursued a lot of options. But I understand that y'all have probably some of those similar issues on the west end of town. And those will continue to get worse throughout the years. And so, it takes a targeted approach and discussions to talk about how is the best way to move that forward. And it's, they're not easy discussions, but there's stories to tell there. Because living at the coast involves storms. And I grew up in Florida, and actually, I kind of like a good storm. So, it's nice to be here when it's storming, believe it or not. But, you know, storms and erosion and how we manage that and maintain the beach are part, a part of that discussion. And this also involves some localized stormwater flood mapping with the community to not just, you know, not just look at what the map tells us and the data tells us, but also talk to what people see every day. And that can involve sunny day flooding and sunny day stormwater problems. But also coastal communities, you know, to some extent, it's a three-legged stool. And you've got to balance the needs of the residents with the needs of visitors, who likely will someday become residents, with the needs of the business owners. And, you know, that's realty, that's tourism, that's a lot of different things. I know that the natural environment and open spaces are really important to people at the beach because that's ultimately what brings us here. That's the economy as well. And there needs to be a balance between having people experience that and be part of that experience and also protecting it and making sure that it stays pristine and that, you know, we're preserving what, what we've been gifted with. But ultimately, planning is about navigating change. I understand there's a significant amount of change headed your way. Ultimately, probably with the build-out of the Williamson Track and probably some other development up on the mainland, you'll see a doubling of the number of homes over the next 20 or 30 years. That can be really hard for people that have lived here a long time, long-term residents, and even newer residents. And so, having conversations with people where we're open and honest about what that means and what that looks like and what, what do we need to preserve and protect to make sure this place stays, stays, you know, precious to us. And also, find ways to invite neighbors, new neighbors and new friends that are going to be moving in, in those neighborhoods. Because ultimately, they'll be part of your community as well. So, I'm going to end on that and kind of pass it back to Cindy to talk a little bit more about our public engagement method.
Thanks, Jay. One of our key beliefs is in any successful plan is that we have to have a robust and personalized public engagement plan. You know, gone are the days of posting a meeting notice, having a meeting, and just hoping you have somebody show up to give you public engagement. We don't do that. We really work on meeting people where they are. You know, we have a whole toolbox of things that we can do, but we really find the most utility in going to where the key things are, like in Oak Island, let's go to the Monday farmer's market. Let's go to your Friday summer concert series. Heck, let's get in a kayak and go with Parks and Rec and explore the Davis Canal and talk to the people that are engaged in that event during the day. The picture over there on the right, the lady in the hot pink, that's me. That's Oak Island Beach. I had just finished a 5K and was celebrating with my OKI friends that we made it through. You know, even doing a, a pop-up tent at one of those events, making sure that we are there and we're ingrained in the community and we're finding out what's important to the residents. What do you want to see in this plan? What do you want to see preserved? What do you want to see new? We also do lots of fun events. Last week, we were in Wendell at a food truck rodeo. Fabulous event. The town hosted it, had hundreds of people come by. We were working on a downtown streetscape plan. We had boards up. We had in, interactive things for the kids to be involved, parents to be involved. And it really was just such a great sense of community, getting people engaged. So, we could hear from them personally what they wanted to see in their downtown. So, we have lots of ideas and things we can do that. We can do pop-up events. We can do design charrettes. We have the ability to do surveys in multi-language. We can do them on social media. But, you know, I also say we have to do the grandparent test. Like, I know my parents would never, ever, ever fill anything out on the internet. Well, let's make sure we have the paper copies. Let's take them to the Parks and Rec facilities. Let's take them to the churches, the community centers. Because we want to make sure that we are getting the full range of input from the citizenry. Jay, do I just click on this? We'll see. Where's, right, we have a video embedded in this, maybe. Oh, here we go. Oh, we're not going to get our music, though. All right. Well, you'll be able to see. Here we go. I'll let you watch the video, then I'll tell you about it. So, this was an amazing engagement event that we held a couple of months ago in Darlington, South Carolina. It's called Junk City. And the premise is that you take things from your, you know, the junk drawer you've got in your kitchen, wherever, the junk drawer you have in your office. You bring them in together. You get people sitting at a table. They're developing a camaraderie. They're talking about what they want their community to look like. For this event, it was a downtown plan. So, they had, you know, it's basically kind of taking like Lego approach. Let's build your city. Let's see what you want. Where do you want the street trees to be? Where, what do you want for benches? What do you want the cross-section of the roadway to look like? And people use all these different elements. They build what they want. Our team members are sitting at every table and we're working with people. And we came up with tons and tons of ideas from what the citizenry wanted to see in their plan. And we were able to put that into all of our recommendation section. It was fabulous. We had 100 people show up for this event. And we just heard such great things about it. So, these are the types of things that we really excel at and we really enjoy doing. And it's something that if we were fortunate enough to be selected for this project, we'd love to be able to talk to you. love to be able to talk to you about doing something like that. And then Bob's going to quickly talk a little bit about our company. You're not flipping? Okay, I will.
We always make mistakes. Thank you. We're very pleased to be here in Oak Island. My history was growing up at Carolina Beach and the yacht basin there, and I've got a problem with fixing the stormwater, because when they had stormwater, we played in it and we thought it was very nice. My background is I started with the federal government in 1974, mainly funding small towns, fire departments, utility projects, housing, and that's sort of been my passion for the 38 years that I was with the federal government. Ended up being the state director with USDA Rural Development. Most town managers know what they have to offer during all the grant programs. They've sort of gone to the wayside a little bit, but they'll be back when you need the loan funds. But in joining Withers, sort of what drew me here was the fact that not only are they deep in planning and utility work that Leonard works for and stormwater work, but they're very wide in the things that they can offer a town. And I related that to what I did with Rural Development. We had 36 different programs that we could do about anything that a town needed done to provide the funding for that project. My talk is always that there's three very important things in a project. Number one's the funding. The other two don't matter. So if you can't get funding for a project, that's an important thing. Our funding group with Withers is, and asset management's about 30 people strong. They're not just grant writers. They work with DEQ, they used to work with Rural Development. We do work with Golden Leaf under contract basis, so we know where that funding is. How does that approach planning? What you're doing with this specific project? Not at all. But how does it work with our planners? We don't have to go out and get subcontractors or partners to work in these projects, because if Jay's got a utility question, talks to Leonard. Leonard's a resident. We've got a Wilmington office with a 40-person staff there that does environmental survey. We've got a director of our stormwater department that's designed some dams for a 10-minute drive away from here and is working with a little ferry drive away on some stormwater projects. So it's not just that North Carolina, that Withers is a North Carolina company, but it's also embedded in our Wilmington office and in our coastal communities. I live in North Myrtle Beach, and of course, we have the same issues that all coastal communities do. So those things make a difference to us. And I know when I started back in '74, I'd go to a conference or something, and I'd look around at all the people in there and think, you know, "I'm the youngest and the least knowledgeable person in here." And now I come to something like this, and I look around, I say, "You know, I'm the oldest and the least knowledgeable person in here." But it's great to work with the good talent that Withers has, and I hope we'll consider you, consider us in this. Our vision is that we don't just do this project, but we do this project, we knock a home run, and you've got a stormwater project or a funding project or a utility project that we might be able to assist with. So we want to develop that relationship and be in it for the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you. We're pushing the envelope on time.
Okay. Well, and we're on our last slide, then. So just wanted to wrap again and just say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I hope that we've been able to prove a little bit to you about our passion and our desire and our interest to partner with you, and we'd love to open it up for any questions that you have.
Bill, you want to start?
Thank you for coming out in this nasty weather.
Of course.
I heard a lot of talk about community involvement and engagement and farmers' market and sporting events and festivals, three to six-hour roundtable meetings, but I didn't hear a lot of talk about meeting with the planning board, meeting with the town administration, meeting with the town council, and getting guidance from that group.
Well, and I'll let Jay speak to that, because that really talks more to the specifics of getting the project started. There's a lot of different elements that are related to this. You know, when we first start a project, we look at the stakeholder group, and that's always city council, town council, that's always the planning board, that's staff, that's Parks and Rec, that's whomever you all determine needs to be on that stakeholder group is who would be one of the key groups that we'd talk with. But Jay, if you want to talk a little bit about how you start structuring those things.
Yeah, I may have glossed over it, but we definitely do meet with council and planning board to start off with, especially since council is elected and, you know, you have the faith of your fellow residents. And so that's very important, because it's kind of crazy to get to the end of a project and not have a spoken with the elected leadership. So we definitely do that right from the start. I've had, like Cindy said, when you build a steering committee for one of these things, y'all have to put your trust in someone. I mean, you could very well serve as a steering committee, but I imagine you have a lot of other committees that you serve on, and sometimes you want some other people at the table. And I've had conversations with places like Beaufort where they said, "Well, we want to have, you know, a steering committee that represents the people that we have." And I said, "Great. Who's on our steering committee?" And they're like, "All white guys and one woman." And I was like, "Okay, is that representative of your community?" Because I'm pretty sure the census said you have 20% not white people, and I'm pretty sure half of you are probably women. So, you know, and so they kind of went back and thought about it, and we found some other perspectives to put on there, but you want to find the right people that can help craft a long-range plan. And so absolutely, if, you know, the proposal we put forward is a framework that's worked in other places successfully, but it needs to be customized and tweaked to match your needs and have the voices from the people that represent your community and can think long-range, long-term, and have a finger on the pulse. Absolutely.
Okay.
No further questions?
Thank you for being here. My colleagues will be very surprised if I actually don't have a question. I just want to tell you that your proposal was very thorough, very complete. It was able to answer all the questions I had for myself, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming out in this weather, and thank you for modifying your presentation to fit into this time slot. I know that was contemporaneous, and I appreciate you doing that. My question is about the end of the project and adoption into implementation. And I've served on the previous land use committee. It was a long grinding ordeal, but the plan, I thought, was quite eloquent, adopted, with 75 recommendations prioritized. I would say probably only 20% were ever actually taken up by council. So how will you do better with council ultimately in the management, in the implementation phase? Tell me what your magic sauce is with that.
Absolutely. I think about that a lot. Yeah, it's crafting a land use plan and building recommendations is tough. You want a shared collective vision that people get behind so that when y'all have to set budget every year, which is basically when you're saying what we're going to get done this year, when you do that, you at least have something to give you some guidance to fall back on and that you understand that the community has supported. The follow-through in any plan always comes down to staff, because, you know, we won't be here every day of the week like the planning department will or the other department heads. And those are the people that you want to have buy-in to bring those issues forward at budget season and talk about what they're going to get done. And then there needs to be accountability from the management. Every quarter, we want to hear a progress report on what's being done. The planning document is a long-range-looking document, you know? I mean, the horizon for a CAMA plan is 30 years, or at least for population projections. That's a pretty big ask of a crystal ball, a 30-year ball, but that's the state constraints that we live within for the CAMA legislation. And obviously, any plan is only recommended, it's only a recommendation for a governing body, so there's a grain of salt with that. But, and this is the fun part for me, and this is actually the reason, sorry, he probably wanted to get to the fun part first. This is the reason I really was excited to join Cindy at Withers Ravanelle, is the breadth and the depth of services that Bob mentioned, because the previous place I worked at didn't really have that. And I'm really more of a doer in my home life than I am a planner, so I like to see things happen. So what we've started doing is, as we get towards the end and we start developing these recommendations, depending on what those are, I can go down and give our stormwater folks a call, our utility folks a call, our funding people a call, and say, "Hey, here's the things they've laid out. Here's the issues that have been raised. What can you do to move this forward later?" And then we can customize those recommendations to provide a framework for moving that forward. And whether it's on the last meeting, I bring my funding person with me and I say, "Hey, you know, so far, the people here at council have identified these three things. Can you please tell them about those five grant programs we know about and when they happen and what we need to do to pre-position this community for those funds to move that forward? Or how can we help them structure their, you know, accounting system to pre-position them for getting FEMA funds should a disaster hit and they need emergency beach nourishment?" And we have a person who does that kind of work and, you know, works with, has worked previously with FEMA and understanding the work that needs to be done in advance of those events. So I think that's one of the most interesting things with working at Withers, is being able to pull together those people at the right moment to build an implementation plan that's actually actionable.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bob?
So if you were to be chosen to move forward, Jay, who would be the actual lead? I'm a little bit confused, your role versus Bob's role.
Bob is our client officer, so he leads, is more of an advisory position, and so he'll be checking in with the community, making sure that Jay and I are doing our jobs, or Jay more so is doing his job, serving you. He's more of a resource, but he's also the one, like, if you call and you say you have a question about funding or we want a question about this grant, he's the person that can help connect the dots. But when it comes to the project, this specific project, Jay, as the project manager, would be the day-to-day contact.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Mark?
That's it. So first of all, I'm very happy your video worked. I was excited to see what appeared to be fun, collaborative, productive engagement in a working session. So my question is, I like your toolbox. It looked like you had some good tools in there. But help me understand your approach, or maybe provide an example where you do get stuck in the weeds or stuck in the mud with a table. You said you have one person at every table. So let's say, for example, the discussion is building height, right? Building height was on your chart. I kind of chuckled at that. We have building heights that were established by voter referendum almost 20 years ago, but you may sit at a table with five people and that's all they want to talk about is building height. And so we know there's not a whole lot we could accomplish in that session about building height. How do you encourage that group to move on to something more productive that would translate into, you know, a plan that could be implemented to Councilmember Box's point? And I will add, I love your response to Councilmember Craft's question about how you want to make sure any kind of group or steering committee or whatever you're trying to engage is diverse and has, you know, visions and points of view, that we're not just all biased and one-sided. I'll stop there with my question.
Yeah, so there's all, you know, there's always a squeaky wheel, and that's fine. Sometimes those help us identify things that really need change right away. Some things are not within the purview of a comprehensive land use plan or a CAMA land use plan. You have to kind of take the long view and be up here in the clouds kind of to some extent. But information given is information that we're going to keep track of. And so that sometimes needs to go to a parking lot. We'll say, "Hey, you know, this is a good discussion. I'm going to put together a meeting with the planner later, and we're going to talk through the history and what your concerns are and organize that." And it may not make it into the plan, but it definitely makes it to the right person on staff who can move that conversation forward or pass that information along. To some extent, I think every land use plan I've worked on to date has involved a parking lot like that for things especially related to ordinance updates, because that's the one-two punch, right? Is like, "Let's get everybody on board and get our land use plan in order, and then now let's make some changes," where the rubber hits the road, which is the development regulation. And I've administered code and I understand how tricky it can be, but building that into the land use plan and having that in front of people provides a really nice roadmap for the next project that needs to move that forward. So yeah, I would say it's a parking lot, but, you know, dealing with people is always dealing with people. You've got to be polite and you've got to listen, and they have something to say, and it might, it might come out like, "Well, my dog, my neighbor's dog is barking all the time," or, you know, "There's pigs getting in my yard." But there might be a deeper issue there that is, maybe, maybe is something we can move along.
Thank you. I appreciate the parking lot analogy. So I'm an IT, we use parking lots all the time, so I like that methodology and analogy, so thank you.
Hopefully, they don't become a parking garage, right?
Unfortunately, with our projects, sometimes they do become a garage.
So I appreciate your description of the nexus of the project really sits between the vision you establish in the plan and the UDO. So how do you manage UDO modifications or recommendations for modifications? Is that part of your proposal?
I don't think that was part of the proposal or scope here. I mean, we would definitely set that up for whoever moves forward next. And, you know, one of the things I think is really important in a land use plan is to develop really clear and develop a lot of guidance within the land use character areas, which, I mean, you all use them in rezoning, so you know what I'm talking about. But develop really clear expectations and guidelines there so that not only can they be used in a really detailed way with your discussions related to people attempting to rezone property, but also they can be used by the staff when it's time to update a zoning district to talk about, "Well, is this the right block length? Is this the right setback? Does this have the character, the experience that we want?" Because I know that, you know, a place to coast is kind of the motto, but I've been doing a little research, and it doesn't look like people around here are interested in coasting. They look like they're pretty involved, from what I've seen so far.
Well, Jay, and also mention about, you know, one of the key things about the recommendation section, too, is making sure that whatever we've heard throughout the process that's related to the UDO is mentioned in the recommendation section carried forward as the next step that needs to be done.
Mm-hmm. Yes, certainly, certainly.
Well, thank you. That's all the time we have, and I very much appreciate your being here tonight. Your presentation was very helpful, and safe travels home.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
No, I know you have a far, far path.
Especially.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Please carry on. Night. Good job, y'all.
Get in there.
Yeah, I'm glad to see who they are and...
Raise your hand.
We're still broadcasting, just so you know. Thank you.
We got a timing mark.
I'm going to run out there with my marks and that.
We had one council member need to take a break, but he'll be right.
Just give us a few minutes. We've got someone coming back.
Y'all have been a busy board tonight. Y'all take your time.
Oh, this is nothing compared to some of our meetings.
I can imagine.
When he walks back in, stare at him.
I will.
Come on, Bill. Come on, Bill. We're proud of it. Yeah, thank you.
You're building in your chamber.
Been here one other time, having played a part. Very impressed with me. Very much chambered, very much built.
Thank you. And I noticed you like our chairs, too. Wasn't that a conversation in the other room? About the chairs? Okay. Well, again, thank you for coming. We look forward to hearing what you have to offer, and it's all yours. We have about 15 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Insight, we just want to say thank y'all for having us here tonight. We're very excited to present our proposal for your comprehensive land use plan update. I'm Austin Brinkley with Insight. This is Ryan Cox and Cindy Anderson from Insight as well. Ryan is the president and Cindy is the director of operations. So we will get started. So the town of Oak Island will serve as the lead of this project team and will have authority over Insight throughout this entire process. We will defer... We will defer to your direction from the inception to the adoption of this CAMA land use plan. We're under full acknowledgement that we are not the experts of the subject matter on Oak Island, and that y'all and your citizens know what is best for Oak Island. We're not going to try and, you know, pretend that we are the subject matter experts. We're going to defer to you in that matter. You can definitely have confidence in our ability to ensure that the planning process is conducted in the proper manner as we go through this development of your land use plan. And we want this to be a document ultimately that the town can look back on and say that the citizen input was considered, and that this is a plan that has our full support. So again, just to touch on the project team and the construction of how we propose this to work, Town of Oak Island is the lead in this. Next, we have Ryan Cox, our principal and president. I will be the project manager, working in close coordination with Cindy Anderson, our municipal planner, as well as project branding and the GIS technician. We're going to handle multiple elements as far as advertisement of the plan, as well as construction of your maps and other visual documents that be located within it. So looking at our qualifications and how we believe that we're best suited to prepare this plan, left side is kind of some of the overall organizational qualifications that we have that apply, you know, to more than just land use planning, such as shoreline access plans, hazard mitigation plans. We do a lot with community development block grant programs, as well as multiple housing assistance programs. Specifically related to this plan, we have an in-depth knowledge and understanding of Chapter 160D of the general statutes, and this comprehensive plan's application to the general statutes as far as what you have to be finding in your plan related to text amendments, map amendments, and other types of zoning procedures. We also have an in-depth understanding of what's required by CAMA, as well as a very good working relationship with NCDCM. Cindy, who is on our project team, some CAMA plans in recent years that she's had experience on that we feel relates to what Oak Island is doing here, is the Carolina Shores CAMA Plan, the Wrightsville Beach CAMA Plan, as well as the North Topsail CAMA Plan. That were all done within the last five years that Cindy played a direct part in. We also, just in general, given our firm's location and a lot of our backgrounds, we have an overall understanding of coastal communities such as Oak Island, what kind of challenges that are currently facing the coastal communities, and the amount of pressure that you face as decision makers. And we know that this plan is going to be something you have to rely on to make those decisions. So we'll keep that in mind throughout the creation of this document. So looking at this a little bit further with each member of the team, Ryan has a really in-depth and exceptional background in hazard mitigation through Insight, as well as through his time with the state, and the application of mitigating hazards through land use planning. We want this to be a plan that is going to mitigate any kind of potential disaster and loss of life in the future. We want to take into consideration hazards as we do the land use plan to a certain extent. I myself spent a good amount of time in local government, so I do have kind of a background on how this plan is going to be used. It helps out a lot to know how the plan is going to be applied while you're constructing that plan, so it can be made in a manner that's actually applicable to what y'all are dealing with. As well as, I understand the importance of the goals, objectives, and policies within the plan. I know sometimes a board can get to that portion where you have to find consistency. And if you don't understand the goals, objectives, and policies, and why you have them in there, it really doesn't make sense to have it included in the plan. So I understand the importance of making sure we get realistic and achievable goals within this plan that align with what the board wants, as well as stakeholders and citizens in Oak Island. And I'm really passionate about engaging the community. I know that this board takes that very seriously, and so do I, because it needs to be a plan that reflects what the citizens want to see. Cindy, she has 25 years of experience in comprehensive and land use planning, as well as the CAMA process. She's worked with several coastal communities from, you know, the southern end of our state all the way up to the Virginia line just about. And she's really efficient in overall project coordination as well. So just to give you an idea of some of the stuff that we are currently working on, we completed Havelock's CAMA Plan back in 2023. Town of Atkinson, we are 90% complete there. We're getting close to finishing up on Newport's CAMA Plan as well. We're about halfway done in Gatesville, and if you're familiar with Craven County, we are just getting started on their CAMA Plan. So just to, you know, let you know that we understand what this project entails and what we're committing ourselves to, we understand that we're not going to be creating a plan that's going to undermine or invalidate any previous efforts that have been made by Oak Island relative to the current CAMA Plan. We're going to focus on the incorporation of what's required by CAMA, as well as, you know, up-to-date public input and data, and revising goals, policies, and objectives to reflect the vision that best suits Oak Island currently. By doing that, we're going to take a comprehensive look at that statement, and we're going to make any kind of amendments that come about as being required in the process as we engage with this board, stakeholders, citizens, and the planning board as well. So the plan is going to address multiple topics. These are some of the key topics, I think, that really are important that we get right in this plan, based off of Oak Island and the pressures that you face. We really want to focus on resiliency in this plan as far as our future land use designations, because we really want to focus on minimizing the loss of property and life in the land use designations, to make sure certain areas of Oak Island that you want to see protected, that they're protected and not encroached upon. The housing component of the plan will be a detailed analysis of the current housing and any demands that exist there. We're not going to, you know, put any kind of goals or objectives in the plan that would put a stress upon your infrastructure, or any of the current housing, or tourism. We're going to really approach this delicately to ensure that Oak Island maintains its identity as a quiet and charming coastal southern community. We're not out to defeat that at all. You know, we realize that's very important to Oak Island, and that's not something that we want to see changing this plan, because that's really a special part of Oak Island's identity. Transportation is going to be evaluated in the plan as well, about how current routes may be altered or improved, as well as how you might benefit from multimodal transportation options in certain areas of the town. That's becoming increasingly important, you know, having those alternative means of transportation for your citizens to enjoy the overall community and feel connected to one another. And then also, we want this to be a user-friendly document. We don't want this to be something that, you know, the average citizen picks up and looks at and says, what am I looking at right now? How do I, how do I read this? How does this apply to me? We want this to be something that all citizens are able to sit down and not only understand, but get excited whenever they read it. And so a big component of this, in every planning process, is the public engagement component. I'm very glad that we both value the importance of public engagement. We're going to foster a process that is equitable, inclusive, and diverse, and we're also going to approach this with innovative methods, such as using virtual engagement, internet surveys. Citizens will have the opportunity to submit comments back on draft sections of the plan through a website. The virtual engagement that I mentioned, we're going to use that, being that there's some citizens that might have non-traditional working hours, or you might have some seasonal residents that aren't here all the time. It may be really easy for them to feel included and engage if they're able to do it from the comfort of their permanent home and not their seasonal home. As well as, we want to conduct the community meetings here throughout the year. You know, we don't want to have them all at a time of the year where it's not going to be reflective of how the population here can experience change depending on the weather and the time of the year. But the biggest thing is we're going to be fully committed to extensive stakeholder outreach and inclusion. We want all people that own property in Oak Island, reside in Oak Island, enjoy visiting Oak Island. We want their voice to be heard, so then you, as a board, can take into consideration all of that whenever we formulate the final document. And so just to touch further on that, we are proposing a total of eight opportunities that are strictly designated for public engagement. Of course, they will have the opportunity to attend planning board meetings, council meetings, but we're looking at having a community kickoff meeting. And Phase One is very important to engage the citizens early in the process so they feel included. We don't want to get up and going, and then two or three months down the road decide we're going to start involving citizens. We want them to know from the onset that their voices are valued. We're going to intermingle virtual engagement hours in between our community meetings, and then we're going to conclude with a final community meeting where we sit down and look at pretty much, you know, some of the major components of that plan as a whole with the citizens before we bring it to the board for adoption. And so looking at the anticipated scheduling timeline here, we're going to get started on this in May. Phase One will run from May to July, anticipating Phase Two to go from August through December. That's really whenever we're going to get in start, get into the process of data collection and drafting the plan. Phase Three, we're going to complete our community involvement. We're going to finish the land use map, and we're going to finish up with the drafting of the plan. And then Phase Four, running from May to July of next year, is where we're looking to get the plan completed and adopted, so you can begin implementing its contents. So the planning board and town council, both are going to be heavily involved in this. The planning board is going to be designated as the official steering committee, which means we will bring those draft articles directly to the planning board throughout the process. They're going to provide direction on the comments that we've received in the document itself. Council's going to be involved, as we're going to provide periodic updates, and we're going to have scheduled planning board, town council joint meetings, and we're going to review the draft plan with the council prior to any kind of submission to Division of Coastal Management. And so looking at the partnership that Insight is hoping to enter into with Oak Island, we're going to be committed to open communication. We have realized that the most effective plans are going to be a result of effective communication. We want it to be an open door between ourselves and you all as far as communication throughout the whole process. Again, I want to stress, we're very neutral in this process. We don't have any kind of predetermined agenda or desired outcome for this plan. We really want to assist you in the process to develop a plan that's going to reflect Oak Island as a whole. I don't have any kind of predetermined desire to see the plan move in one way or the other. We realize, again, the kind of challenges that you face as a coastal community. We're eager to share our expertise in that and our knowledge. And then we recognize, again, the importance that this land use plan is as far as your implementation of it, how important it is to the decisions that you make for the future of your town, and we want this to be a document that you can rely upon and trust.
So we're pushing on 15 minutes. Is there anything?
I think we may be at the last slide now. Yes, ma'am. If you have any questions for myself, or Ryan, or Cindy, please feel free.
Have you started, Bob, yet?
No.
Go ahead.
So I love the way you laid it out. I love the four phases that you put together. You know, you led with the community engagement meetings, but then you also said that the planning board will, they'll be, they'll run point, and they'll provide direction, and that's really important. You want to make sure we have a balance, right, between community engagement and planning board. Love the concept of joint meetings between council and planning board. A very efficient use of time, as well as a great opportunity to collaborate. So thanks for a great presentation. I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mark?
Just one quick question. Appreciate all the experience in coastal communities. Cindy, you look like you're well-qualified and more than capable of taking care of the project, so I love that. My question is, and I do appreciate allowing us to have more input, right? You're not coming in with any predetermined plan on your own. Talk to me a little bit about our commercial district, and maybe some projects you may have worked on in a coastal area that included a... We have two, what I call downtown districts, two little small commercial areas. How would you maybe help guide us on some ideas or plans for how that kind of fits into our coastal community fit and feel, right? You know, we're a small town, but we do have these commercial districts, I call them, right?
Yes, sir. So if I understand the question correctly, you're wanting to, you're wanting to see how to preserve the residential areas, but see the commercial areas thrive at the same time?
That's the question.
Yes, sir. That can be accomplished a number of ways. You know, really, it's going to be dependent upon how the land is designated, particularly, you know, to preserve your residential areas around your commercial areas, you're going to want to make sure you have appropriate designations that allow for a smooth transition from commercial into residential, as far as the types of uses that can locate within there. You also can develop goals and policies that determine the type and intensity of commercial development that you want to see within that. The plan also may determine that, you know, this commercial or developing area of Oak Island is so unique that it really requires an in-depth small-area plan to better understand the nature of that commercial area. Because I understand you don't want to deter anything commercial, but you really want to protect your residential interests that you have here and that have been here as well. So that would be some of the ways that we would, you know, approach that opportunity that exists here, to protect your commercial areas and your residential areas at the same time. It's going to depend on proper designations, and how those designations relate to one another, where they're adjacent, and how they transition into the types of uses encouraged or allowed there.
I greatly appreciate your answer about a smaller area land use plan. I think that's spot-on, so thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll say the same thing Councilman Kilo said. It jumped out at me that in your Phase One staff meeting, Phase Task Two, Joint Town Council Planning Board, and then finally, Task Five, Community Involvement. I smiled to see, get the feel from the planning board, and from the town administration, and from the town council, before you start getting the feel from the others. So I appreciated seeing that. And to further elaborate on what Councilman Martin said, we had, in 2001, there was a Town of Long Beach, there's a Town of Yaw Pond. They had a little bitty town in Long Beach, and a little bitty town in Yaw Pond. And they've always just coexisted a mile apart from each other, so we don't have a downtown. You already answered Councilman Martin's question, so that's all for me.
Terry?
Thank you. I did have a question, and right near the end of your presentation, you answered it for me, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you for modifying your presentation on the fly, so to speak. My question's about implementation. As you look at all of the towns you've serviced, what kind of success have those towns had with implementing the recommendations of a land use plan?
You're going to experience your most success on implementation whenever you set realistic and achievable goals for your town. What I've observed in some land use plans is they, you know, on paper, these are great goals, objectives, policies, actions, whatever you want to call them. But if it's not something you can realistically do here in Oak But if it's not something you can realistically do here in Oak Island, it's just words. Your most successful implementation is going to, is going to come from being honest with what you have here and honest in your assessment of your potential, and then developing implementation goals that can be achieved. That's where your most success is going to be. So, you know, if the plan goes in one way or the other, you're going to want to make sure that your implementation goals are going to support that and be something that can realistically be achieved. I mean, just for example, you know, a 30,000-seat arena would not be realistic for Oak Island. So that would not be a realistic implementation goal. Providing more green and open space, that would be a realistic implementation goal, something pretty achievable that you could, you know, check off and say, "We successfully implemented our plan and helped our community by doing so."
So I would concur with that. And I appreciate the layout that is kind of content-neutral. You don't have a particular perspective that you want to bring or impose on the process. But what role do you play in implementation? Because I've seen some land use plans, I've been on a land use committee, and it was, the architecture of it was beautiful, but very little of it was implemented. So at some point, are you editing the goals? Are you framing them?
Yes, sir. So to develop the implementation goals, what we'll do is we'll look at currently what goals you have. Based off of input we receive from this board, planning board, and citizens throughout the process, we're going to take an evaluation of all of the voices heard. And then we're going to take our expertise. Based off of those voices, we're going to recommend new or modified implementation goals. Present those modified goals to you, and then let the planning board and this board, and ultimately the citizens, whenever we bring it back to them, be the determining factor. If, is this a realistic implementation goal? Or, you know, gosh, if we implement this goal, we certainly don't want to see any of that here. That's really how we're going to come about it, is we're going to have to provide our recommendation on what certain implementations may need to be to achieve some of the goals or the strengths that are identified through the planning process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming tonight and for your presentation. And as I expressed before, we won't be making a decision tonight, but we'll be in touch soon, and wish you a safe journey home.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and same to all of you.
Thank you very much.
So what, how does council want to bring this information together and make a determination? Any druthers?
I have a flight tomorrow, so I'm at the end of my availability. But whatever this body decides is fine with me.
When do we think we need to know?
Well, one of them wanted to start in May. Not that we're driven by that, but...
When you coming back?
Sunday.
Yeah, that's not a big deal. I wasn't thinking until next week.
And if we do it next week, can we just tag on to one of the workshops?
Sure.
Rather than do a separate meeting?
Yeah.
We can have a discussion and a decision. That's a great idea.
Has Matt had an opportunity to review?
Oh, yes, sir.
We have workshops Tuesday and Thursday.
Matt, Steve, Brady.
Does he have, can we, can we...
Do we need to adjust the...
Receive some insight from Matt?
I think they gave y'all scoring sheets. Didn't y'all come up with some kind of scoring sheet?
Not for this.
Not for this, no.
Being a baseball coach and going to tryouts, I knew how to score people, so I gave them a 1 through 10, all four of them.
Okay.
I have a scoring sheet.
What is it down there?
The special meeting for the budget workshop Tuesday, we were already putting a couple of small things on there. And Mr. Kirkland won't be back in the office until the 18th anyway. So if we could add this to the special meeting on the 23rd, budget workshop, if that would work.
Yeah, I think, I think we need the administrative input on this.
Oh, absolutely. That would be my preference. Yeah.
Would you like some criteria to score, or would you rather just do it free-form?
I like free-form on this one, but...
With their input?
Yeah.
It's fine. I don't need a form.
Okay.
Yeah, I like to hear what people's thoughts are and talk it around, kick it around.
Okay.
That sound good? Excellent. Well, thank you. This was a worthwhile exercise, and I appreciate everyone's participation. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Me.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
Extra handouts down here from one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, have you received everybody?